All right, it is seven thirty on Monday, November fourth.
Call the Brainerd City Council meeting to order. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
Bedeau.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four is the approval of the agenda. I've had a request for one change. Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, I'd move to adopt the agenda, but let's move from six A five. Let's move that item to seven H. That's the resolution reaffirming the purchase of the Roberts property. An ISO move.
Perfect. We've got a motion to accept, to approve the amended agenda by Johnson, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five is a consent calendar, notice to the public that all matters listed are considered by the, considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown. Prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call, is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar? Motion by Stunek, second by Terry. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, the consent calendar is adopted. Item six is council committee report, six A is personal and finance committee. Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're down to four items on the agenda, the first of which is a police officer hiring, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Mr. Samuel Ritchie effective November fourth, 2024 on step two of the police officer wage grid, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. This gets us at twenty-six officers. We do have the twenty-seventh and full contingent officer in pre-employment process right now.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is to approve some deferment of assessments, and the motion is to approve the applications for deferment of assessments payable in 2025 for applicants at PIDs four one one nine one two two zero, four one three zero zero six eight two, and four one two five oh eight seven five, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Chairman Johnson.
Annual applications, these were all deferred in the past, and we're just going to continue to defer them next year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Next one is just an update. Staff has been working on getting the levy much, much lower than we had it at the preliminary level, and they've found, it's just discussion only, they've, so far they've found seventy-three thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars in savings, so we're about halfway there to getting to a six percent or less levy. This will be on the next PNF council agenda too, to, so we can give our input to staff on what we would like to see cut or increase or whatnot.
Thank you. Mr. Bevins. Mr. Chesak.
Would it be possible to get the, what the staff is recommending to be cut before?
Chairman Johnson.
I would like that. Let's get that on the next agenda when we talk about it in two weeks.
Is it soon enough?
Is it possible to get it sooner? I mean.
Connie, how soon could you get that from Mr. Chesak?
I can send a summary tomorrow morning.
Is that soon enough?
Yeah, perfect. I'd like that, but let's also put it in the packet next time still, so the public can review it as well.
Excellent. Any further questions, comments on the 2025 levy and budget update? Hearing none, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, next up is a resolution, and the motion is to adopt the attached proposed resolution relating to the finance transferring certain funds to and from sinking funds, closing out funds three sixteen and three twenty-one, with the cash balances to be transferred to six other debt service funds, and any future delinquent tax revenues or special assessment collections going to fund four hundred, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
So funds three sixteen and three twenty-one were previous debt issuances that we have fully paid off, and there is a cash balance, so we're just transferring that cash into some of the other sinking funds to help pay off the other debt that is still outstanding.
Thank you. Mr. Chesak.
Do we always do this type of transfer via resolution? Because that's a common practice.
Connie, can you answer that?
Yes, we do it by resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, so that resolution is adopted. Five, we've moved. Anything else, Chairman Johnson?
End of report.
Thank you. I, next up is six B, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had seven items on safety and public works tonight. First was adopting two resolutions having to do with the IIJA Technical Assistance Grant Agreement and support NSBP grant application. First resolution is to approve the IIJA Technical Assistance Grant Agreement and adoption of the attached, attached resolution agreement to the terms of the grant, and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion?
I would defer to our city engineer if anyone has questions on this.
He's not at a microphone, so any questions of this, comments? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next motion from this item was adoption of the attached resolution supporting the NSBP grant application, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
Say these are both having to do with what we approved in the last meeting, the ten thousand that we're spending to reach some grants for the pedestrian bridge.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next item was authorization of application for the carbon reduction program grant for the trunk highway two ten Lum Park Pedestrian Bridge Project, and motion coming out of committee was to recommend authorization to apply for the CRP grant program for the trunk highway two ten Lum Park Pedestrian Bridge Project for one million dollars, and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
This is the grant that we already received, the one point three eight million, or one point three million. We pushed it along, so we're looking to add another million dollars to that, getting us a little closer to completing that project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next was an application for the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program for the Oak Street Reconstruction Project, and motion coming out of committee was to recommend authorization to apply for the STBGP grant for the Oak Street Reconstruction Project in the amount of one point two five million. ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
This is obviously Oak Street Reconstruction coming up in the tenure plan. Looks like we're currently soliciting for 2029. This amount would help in what sounds like about half to a third maybe of the entire project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? My only one is hopefully, since this will be the third time that we've done this road since I've been on the council, hopefully this will be our third and final time redoing Oak Street. Any further comments or concerns? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next was a discussion on Lowell Safe Routes to School Project Construction Detour. Staff is recommending that we don't set up a detour for this. There's just too many factors that make it more difficult with a detour. We've seen that before with our safe routes projects. So we went ahead and we're going to recommend not setting up a detour, and that was a motion coming out of committee, and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next was Bolton and Mink Amendment Request for the Laurel Street Bridge Repair Project. Just some extra hours that Bolton and Mink put into some additional issues that came up, came to the total of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. We're recommending approval of the amendment request for Bolton and Mink in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next was Engineering Services Proposal for the Hawkins Ronald Joseph Resurfacing Project. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend award of the Engineering Services Contract for this project to more engineering in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Our final item was an update on the trunk highway three seventy-one B Willow Street comparison of costs that was requested of staff, and just had a discussion, there was no motion on this, but we have a chart that staff kind of did their best on comparing what the costs would have been in 2018 compared to 2025 based on the pricing that we had back then, and now it's a little tough to compare, but it's like the overall total cost would have been cheaper back then, but with our HSIP grant, it actually brings our cost down below possibly what it could have been. Overall, it is going to cost taxpayer dollars in general more, but maybe not so much for the citizens in Brainerd.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on the roundabout cost comparison? Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. Can we use H SIP dollars for sanitary and water projects, or is that for just roads? Just roads, so that grant that is taking down the cost of the street that went up substantially is not affecting at all the additional one hundred forty thousand dollars in water or five thousand dollars in sanitary, right? That's just additional costs on the ratepayers because of the delay in the project, so.
Right.
It's something worth considering.
Well, and I don't, I don't think it really matters. We'd kind of have to do it, but good point.
Yeah, the water fund, the water fund does not need additional one hundred fifty thousand dollar expenditures, I'll tell you that.
Right on. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Thank you very much. Please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you. We will move on to item seven, which is unfinished business. Seven A is a call for applicants. I will turn it over to Mayor Bedeau.
Thank you, President Bevins. The following boards and commissions have seats available, applications available on our website. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. Library Board, one term expiring 2025. Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2026. The EDA also has one term available expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as council president, I have two appointments available on the Planning Commission, one term to expire in 2024, and one term to expire in 2026. Item seven B is the final reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance fifteen seventy-four, the fee schedule. This is submitted by Mr. Kravik. Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So highlights of the fees, proposed fee schedule change include residential set permit fees increasing to fifty dollars per inspection. Some permits require one, some two, some three. Yearly food truck licenses decrease from three hundred dollars to fifty dollars with a seventy-five dollar fire inspection, including a one thousand dollar fee for city property inquiries, which would cover the cost of an appraisal, and then adding the fire department fees to the fee schedule, which currently was not, and then increasing most of those set fees by twenty-five dollars. So with that, staff recommends to conduct the final reading and dispense with the actual reading, hold a public hearing, approve proposed ordinance fifteen seventy-four, and then adopt a resolution for summary publication of ordinance fifteen seventy-four, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kravik. Any questions of staff on the fee schedule? Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, Mr. Kravik, why is staff recommending these increases?
Based, which increase?
Well, any of them, all of them.
Based on the amount of time that it takes, one of our inspectors specifically for the building department, we looked at other municipalities and what they're charging. I would say we're probably middle of the road for some of these inspections. Some of them do by straight valuation, which would be considerably more than what we're charging right now. You know, for instance, the, the food trucks, again, looking at what other municipalities, you know, have charged, as well as hearing from food trucks that were interested in coming, but we're hesitant with the, the three hundred dollars, especially if it was going to be over maybe one weekend. So, and then I guess Mr. Holmes could answer any questions about the fire fee increases, but certainly wanted to get that as part of the fee schedule, because by ordinance then it is certainly more effective if, if anybody were to question the, the fee schedule for the fire department.
It's more or less a competitive type thing.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chesak. Anything else?
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I, Mr. Mayor Bedeau. Oh, I just, I have a procedural question, James. There's something on this that I've never seen before. You've got three votes tonight instead of just two. You've got the final reading, and then the approval of the ordinance, and then the adoption of the ordinance. Is that correct? Do I do that three times tonight?
Yep, so, yeah, so fin-
Okay.
Final reading to dispense with the actual reading, hold the public hearing, approve proposed ordinance, and then the change in this one that we don't typically do would be adopting a resolution to provide a summary ordinance for the paper.
Thank you, wanted to make sure. Mayor Bedeau.
So my only question is still on the food trucks. Does, is this going to then remove the fifty dollar single day use?
Yes, essentially it wouldn't be needed. There'd still be a fifty dollar requirement for the Parks Department, so fifty dollars for a city, fifty dollars for parks.
Okay, and, but this still will have to then, these ones will then have to get the fire inspection as well then, correct?
They would, yep.
Okay. I, I don't know exactly how I feel about the, that in particular. I, I'd be open to seeing where it goes. I, I don't know if it's in our best interest to just open the floodgates to anyone that wants to bring a food truck up, but, you know, for, if we're blocking all people from bringing food truck up, food trucks up, I don't think that's a great idea, but I, I still don't know where I stand on that.
Thank you for that clear and concise comment.
But how about if you have to vote?
Specifically just on food trucks. I, I have no problem with any of the other fees being changed.
Any further comments from staff? All right, hearing none. Let's try item number one, which is to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance one five seventy-four and dispense with the actual reading, and a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. Is there a move to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance one five seventy-four?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. It is now seven forty-eight. I will open the public hearing, and anybody who is in the audience can come on up, state their name and address, and let us know what they think about the new fee schedule. If you are online, star three will notify us that you are looking to speak, and then star six will unmute you. I'll ask a second time if there's anybody in the audience or online that wishes to speak on the proposed fee schedule. And I'll ask a final time. Please come forward, state your name and address, and it's seven forty-nine, and I will close the public hearing, and we're looking for a motion to approve proposed ordinance one five seventy-four.
So moved.
Motion by Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Mr. President.
Resolution. We're coming there, we're getting there. It's just approving it. This is what I asked.
No.
You about it.
This is an ordinance. Mr. President, I think that, because this is an ordinance, I think we have to do a roll call.
Okay.
For both of them, yeah.
Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, the ordinance is approved. Now we're looking for a motion to adopt a resolution for summary publication of ordinance one five seventy-four.
So moved.
Motion by-
Second.
Stingline, second by-
Chesak.
Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
What's a summary publication?
It's, nobody knows.
Oh, good. We're proving this.
We're just going to do this, or, we're, we're getting good, we're going to do this one till we're good. Mr. Kravik.
Yes, we have-
Same question I asked earlier.
We have done summary publications from time to time. This one, because you have those large appendixes in there that, that show the fee schedule, it would cost hundreds of dollars to publish something like that. We've done it with the zoning code in the past. I believe the, the sewer ordinance that we've done, that's been done in the past as well. It's, it does say that we do provide a copy if anybody wishes to see it, but again, it's typically done in, in other municipalities as well, where you have a very large ordinance. Otherwise, it would cost hundreds of dollars to print something like this.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. We will move on to seven C, the final reading of proposed ordinance one five seven five, burning restrictions. Mr. Kravik and Mr. Fire Chief Holmes, if you have anything to add to what's in our packet.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start out here. So the current burning regulations are not codified in city code and can therefore not be easily enforced if a resident does not comply. The language drafted in the ordinance was taken from the recreational fire regulations that are found on the PDF within the city of Brainerd website, but again, must be codified in order to have, in order to be more strict and be able to apply the city code to it. So with that, staff does recommend conducting the final reading of proposed ordinance fifteen seventy-five, and to dispense with the actual reading, hold a public hearing, and approve proposed ordinance fifteen seventy-five.
Thank you. Mr. Fire Chief Holmes, anything you would need to add? Thank you. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. The first item on this is to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance fifteen seventy-five and dispense with the actual reading. A vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. Is there a motion to hold the final reading?
So moved.
Motion by Stunek, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. It is seven fifty-three, and I will open the public hearing just as before. If you're in the audience, please step forward in an orderly manner, state your name and address, and let us know what you think of the new ordinance fifteen seventy-five. If you're online, star three notifies us that you wish to speak, star six will unmute you. I'll ask a second time if there's anybody who wishes to speak on proposed ordinance fifteen seventy-five. I will ask a final time if anybody in the audience or online wishes to speak on proposed ordinance fifteen seventy-five, the burning ordinance. It's a burning ordinance. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will look for a motion to approve proposed ordinance fifteen seventy-five.
So moved.
Motion by Chesak, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, that ordinance is adopted. We will move on to seven D, integration work group update. I'll turn it over to City Administrator Broyles.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just by way of quick review, the city council has, this first came up approximately fifteen months ago to consider integration of city IT and public utilities IT. Again, just by way of review, on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, Councilman Johnson requested Again, just by way of review, on July 31, 2023, Councilman Johnson requested a conversation occur between the city and public utilities to find potential efficiencies, informing one citywide IT department, like our HR department. Subsequently, in my six-month review, I did have a bullet as a goal for my next reporting period to integrate IT finance. That was on a consent calendar and it was voted for unanimously. Then lastly, on October 21, the council did direct an IT integration, or excuse me, an integration work group to oversee this process, identified five named members by position. That group did meet on October 25, and one of the recommendations that came out of that group was, even though it wasn't my six-month review, on the consent calendar, we thought it would be appropriate to put something before council to get a vote on record, is if council still wants staff to pursue integration of IT and finance. I will say that we have a draft organization chart. We have draft position descriptions to go along with that organization chart, but staff is just asking for a motion to direct staff to continue to work to integrate IT and finance between BPU and the city.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Okay, we'll start with Mr. Chesak then Mr. O'Day.
Yeah, I guess it would be for Nick. At our October 25 meeting, do you still see the likelihood here of having a workshop to kind of be able to identify the different positions, the job descriptions outlined, and perhaps any cross-training of the bullet or the, what do they call, the presentations that were given were in a, I forget what format they were again.
Powerpoint.
Yeah, there's a couple, at least two or three of those, I think. And I was just still hoping that that would come forward at a time where we can get all the information that's been shared, that I think only has been shared with staff. And so we, as a council, have the best information available to us before we start, I guess, I'm not so concerned about the structure that you have identified with the job descriptions, but more so than the actual work that would be done by the different IT department people that we have currently, and if we're gonna add more or not to that. I would really be in favor of seeing a workshop so everybody knows what's out there, who knows what, who doesn't, and we can share all that, even with the, I think it's important, the Public Utility Commission members, as this was on, mentioned on their meeting last Tuesday, and there's still some concern as to what's really going on, because it's kind of still a little bit cloudy, I think, for a lot of people, more so than just the structure that's been outlined in the job description. So I'd like to see us move forward with a motion to have a future workshop to provide the PowerPoint presentations and maybe more identifying what's going on. So if that's what the council wishes.
I certainly think that's appropriate. If that's what council directs, we would be happy to provide that information.
I'll turn it back to you when the time comes, Mr. Chesak, but right now, I'm gonna just turn it over to Mr. O'Day. He had his hand up as well.
Yeah, I think you kind of covered a bit of what I was gonna say. I don't feel one way or another about a workshop. I think it would be a good thing, I guess, but anytime we're looking to explore more efficiency in our setup, I'm all for it. So I just wanted to make sure that this is something that is going to come before the council at some point, before we just move into it. We don't, I want to make sure that this is something that comes before the council that gets approved in the end, after we've decided what the best way forward through this integration is going to be, or even if it's step-by-step, something like that. But I think our staff that is involved in this just needs to know that we need to look into these things and we're just looking to be more efficient and to have our staff be able to do multiple jobs when needed, or at least be trained in multiple jobs in all departments. I think that's always helpful. So I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Mr. O'Day. Mr. Broyles?
Thanks, Councilman O'Day. I completely agree. Staff wants to be as transparent as we can. We certainly, whatever happens, whether there's a workshop or not a workshop, whatever council directs, all of the, all of our actions and recommendations will be brought before the full council.
Any other comments or questions of staff before I turn it back to Mr. Chesak? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just wanna kind of second what Mike O'Day said, that I think when we started going on this, we're looking for efficiencies within the organization and to make us run better, potentially save money. So I'm not just looking, I don't want everything just to be integrated if that's gonna cause us to hire seven more staff to manage this integration, right? It needs to be efficiencies to make us service our ratepayers and taxpayers better and potentially save money along the way. So I'm hoping that's the direction that that work group is trying to take it, but that's just my thought on it.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments of staff as to where we are? Mr. Chesak, you said you had a motion.
I did, but I did want to follow up one quick, I guess, question or comment.
Absolutely.
So if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Broyles had set a goal to have this and it was part of his evaluation, and we all, I believe all of us agreed, and the way it was worded, I believe the goal was to get IT and finance with public utilities and city integrated by 2025, or somewhere throughout the next year. And then in the summary, it says after, do this after the IBW Local 31 has been finalized, the contract. But it appears we've started this a little before all that. And I mean, I guess that's what it was stated in the summary. And so I guess my question is, is have we kind of got the cart before the horse if we're waiting for that contract to be finalized? And I think that's to arbitration, is it not?
Mr. Broyles?
I think what you said is absolutely correct. That's what it says in the six-month review. We can certainly wait until the contract is finalized. My sense as staff was that once we were going to arbitration, there was not any, really any more staff work to be done on that front. That's really between the lawyers right now and we'll have an arbitration hearing and we'll have to let some 30-day windows pass, et cetera, et cetera. But we can certainly wait if the council so desires until after the contract is settled, or we can continue down the path, you know, intentionally and methodically and keeping council informed along the way. It's up to the council.
Okay, Mr. Chesak, you have the floor. So there's three things that I see, and I'm hoping your motion will address all three. One is to continue the integration process. Two is, do we have to wait for the contract?
Yep.
If, is there a timing that you can effectively change? And the third thing, of course, is the work group.
Yes.
Yours.
Okay, I would move that we continue the work group and just as a, and include those staff that I believe our administrator feels necessary at the time we're discussing, including HR and finance people when they're needed, and then with the work group. And then also to, I would say, wait till we get a finalization of the arbitration and/or the contract agreement with IBW 31, Local 31. And then also to get a workshop together. I would say sometime within the first three months of next year, sometime before the end of March, unless we need, unless other people think that could be amended. That's my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Chesak, a second by Stingline. First up is Kara Terry.
May I ask Councilmember Chesak for some clarification?
Sure.
Just some understanding. Councilmember Chesak, so you had said continue the work group going forward, but wait until the arbitration is complete? What is it that we're waiting on?
Well, that's the way it was presented, both in the summary and also the evaluation. It identified after the arbitration is finalized and then after the contract. So if we go by that wording, that's been on our table, on our plate before now, I would just like to continue that. The work group, just wait until all those things are concluded before we continue.
Okay, thank you.
Tiffany Stingline?
I, I would like to move to divide the question and pull out that second piece from the first and third.
The second one is?
The second part is the motion to direct continued integration?
No.
Or the waiting?
It's the waiting until the arbitration, to pull that out. So we'll talk about them in two separate motions if my motion passes.
Okay, so this is like a motion to amend?
Yes.
Treat this as a motion to amend? I'm gonna ask for a second, but I think I'd prefer to defeat it the way it is. But that's just my personal opinion. But we'll look for a second to Alderman Stingline's motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, so now we will discuss pulling that one portion out, which is the part where we wait, okay? Anybody wish to discuss that?
Well, so I just don't think that we're.
Tiffany, you're up.
Yep. I don't think that we would benefit, because I think this is gonna be a long and fairly complicated process. I don't think we benefit by waiting, even though that was what we were thinking at the time when we did that six-month review. I would like to see us move forward without waiting for the arbitration to close. But I like the first and third parts.
Thank you. Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Stingline. I don't, I haven't heard a reasonable explanation as to what we benefit by waiting or what we lose by continuing to meet. I, so I, I don't see why we should wait, so I support the amendment to the motion and support the other two parts of the motion.
Thank you. Councilman? I, hold on. Okay, Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, I would have been happy with a friendly amendment to just take that part out.
No, we didn't get that.
Friendly amendment doesn't exist.
Well, yeah, okay. That's great.
Thanks, Jeff. Take as long as you want.
I think maybe the intent of this was about staff time and the timing and everything that's going on. So if staff isn't spending time through arbitration, I think it's smart to move forward with this as the next step. I think maybe the official, any official changes that are made might be something that hopefully arbitration is done by the time we get there, because I do agree that it's probably gonna take a little time, so that's all.
Thank you. I add that I think it would have been much cleaner to defeat this motion and restart. We'd have been done by now, but it's not happening. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, so we're gonna vote on Tiffany and Kara's motion to pull this off and vote on it separately, which is kind of interesting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. So that'll be the second thing that we vote on. So we're gonna go back to the original motion, removing that part about we wait until arbitration is over, okay? Then back to that, we'll discuss that. Anybody who wishes to discuss the amended motion? Okay? All in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So we're gonna continue the work group, meetings and discuss the fully integration of the city public utilities, IT and finance departments. It is okay for the administrator to add staff members as needed.
Mr. President?
Just hold on, I'm just trying to repeat the motion, so you know, so you know what we, and we're going to schedule a workshop. So now we're gonna schedule a workshop, because that's part of the original motion. So let's all whip out our calendars here and see, Mr. Broyles, if you have.
Let's do it on the day of our retreat.
Well, that would be in February or March. We could. Is that a motion, Mr. Chesak?
We got a full day, right?
I'm not sure.
Has that been set yet?
Well, Mr. Broyles says, our administrator says, we could just add it on to that day.
I'd be fine with me.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a motion by Chesak to just add it to the work, to the workshop that is tentatively scheduled for late February, early March. Is there a second? Mr. Johnson?
No. No, ready to speak again.
I'll ask a second time if there's a second. Hearing none, the motion fails for lack of a second. Anybody wish to try another time and date?
I have a question.
Mr. O'Day?
Do we have a budget workshop at all between now and the end of the year?
Not scheduled.
No, we've, we chose not to.
We're gonna handle that PNF in council meetings. Anything else with the budget?
Maybe we could just have a integration workshop instead between now and the end of the year?
We certainly could. I gotta ask Mr. O'Day to yield the floor to you if he chooses.
Yeah, I yield.
Okay, Mr. Chesak?
May I ask, Nick, if we were to go over the PowerPoints, which I hope is part of the workshop, what kind of timeframe are we looking at regarding, I know there's perhaps two of them for sure, maybe a third one that was combining both of them, and I don't know if we need to be overburdened with too much information, but some, at least one or two of the, I think Sean and Aaron each did one, to kind of give us an idea of what staff is looking at, the timeframe.
Yes, please.
Thanks, Councilman Chesak. I do believe that if it's just PowerPoint presentations and if we want full council and the BPU Commission to be in attendance, as well as I would assume perhaps key staff from both the city and BPU, I can't imagine, it'd be speculation, but I would think that we could wrap this up in a couple of hours, tops.
I'm hearing a unanimous consensus that we want a workshop, but I've heard nobody put forth a, oh.
Mr. President?
Alderwoman Stingline.
I will move that we have that workshop on Monday, February 10 at 6 o'clock.
So you're gonna schedule two, if that's the 10th?
Is that a holiday?
No.
Yeah, so many of them.
Okay, we have a motion for the 10th, that's 6 o'clock here in council chambers.
Second.
Okay, and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. There you go. Well, those things happen.
God willing.
Yeah. It's two hours, chief.
No, I said half of us might not be here then.
Oh, right on.
After tomorrow.
Right, and maybe that's good. All right, Tiffany Stingline, you asked to have the part about the timing removed to vote on it separately. So that motion is still on the floor, because that's the way you had it. So the motion is, this is why I thought it might be, there is a simpler way to do this for next time, but the motion is to hold off with any integration, except for the work group and the workshop, until after arbitration. That motion was seconded and then it was amended to pull it off to be voted on separately. Is there any discussion on that motion on the floor? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion fails. So does anybody wish to put a timing on integration? Or, or this can come back, right? We, as Mr. O'Day suggested, and I think we all agreed, we'd like to see this back one more time anyway. And we now have a work group time. But does anybody feel they need to put a timing on this? Mr. Johnson?
I don't think that would be a good idea. I don't think we should rush it. I don't think we should drag it out. I think we have the committee, the city administrator is on it. Let's just let it take as much time as it needs to take.
Okay, appreciate that. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add to the timing? Or anything else regarding the IT and finance department integration work group?
Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chesak?
There is no motion on the floor, right?
Right, correct.
Okay, so my original motion said that work group continue with that only after, but we will still continue the work group.
Yep.
That's obvious based on the other two parts.
Yep.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions, concerns about the public utilities, city IT and finance integration work session groups shops? All right, well, let's move on. That worked really, that worked really good. I hope the kids at the civics class were paying attention to that one. Item E is an update information requested on the Brainerd Lakes Regional Airport. Mr. Broyles, City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President. On October 7, council asked staff to kind of run down some answers on three items. Two and three, we have completed and we have reported on those at the, excuse me, October 21 council. The last item was to try to anticipate or estimate how much staff time relative to human resources and finance that the staff spends supporting the Brainerd Lakes Regional airport, airport, pardon me. This is, these are very, very broad approximations. Sean, if you can scroll down to the next little chart. We don't, we can't base this on anything just because of the way we track our time. So this is just based on conversations with our HR director and our finance director. So we are anticipating that in 2024, that we will spend approximately 453 hours between finance and HR in support of the airport, and the dollar amount on that would be just under $23,000. And we tried to break it down, you know, to the, to the different functional areas within finance and HR, and those numbers are provided. But again, this is not based on time cards, it's not based on any hard data, it's based on conversations with staff and best estimates.
Thank you, Mr. Broyles. Any questions, comments on the presentation? Mr. Johnson?
So when it was pitched to us that we should just assume all responsibility for the airport, one of the reasons was how much time HR spends on stuff out at the airport. But now I'm being told that it's 15 hours a year? And we should take on the whole behemoth of the airport because somebody had to work for 15 hours? I, I'm further against wanting to have anything to do with the airport after seeing that.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Any other comments, questions, or concerns on tonight's presentation on estimated costs for 2024 at the airport? Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, the one thing I know was not calculated because IT is reimbursed. However, it's a little concerning to me. If the time that the IT spends at the airport, it was indicated that nothing is left unattended for city facilities while IT is working at the airport. If I'm not mistaken, that's something, maybe I'm paraphrasing that, I think that's a correct assessment of how that was presented. But if that's the case, and staff is, IT for the City of Brainerd is at the airport, that almost suggests that if they're not at the airport, they wouldn't have nothing to do here. That wouldn't be the case, though, would it? I guess maybe Mr. Broyles would wanna?
No, that would not be the case. And Sean, if you have anything to add, please jump in, but that would not be the case, as I understand it.
Sean, anything to add?
Can you restate the question?
Well, my question is, if you're, if you're not, if you're not at the airport, you're here, or one of you, either you or Laurie are here doing work IT related to city facilities.
Yep.
So I think it's a little bit, and that's, that's, of course, the answer is yes, they are doing work here, but yet if they're not here, how is that work, that work is not being done? And that was indicated the opposite in the information we've received.
And the question again?
Well, it's not really a question, it's a comment. It's, well, work is being done when they're not at the airport for the City of Brainerd. But it was implied that nothing is affected by them working at the airport. Well, they're not working for the city if they're working for the airport. And so I would argue that, is my point. I think everybody would understand what I'm saying, I would hope. I'm open for questions if you don't.
Any questions of Mr. Chesak? Nope. Okay, any other comments on the presentation on estimated costs that we spend at the airport on finance or human resources? All right, then we will move.
Mr. Bevins, that does go, my point is this.
Yeah.
If they're working at the airport.
Yeah.
IT, then they're not working at city facilities, which is a cost to the city, which is indicated that there is no cost to the city because we're reimbursed. And I don't agree with that, because they can't do work for the City of Brainerd facilities if they're at the airport. Therefore, you have implied costs where they're not able to work for the city. So I didn't appreciate that being put in there, because we can't track the time for IT because it's reimbursed, so therefore there's no cost. I don't agree with that. Staff works for the city, they get paid, they're doing work for the city. If they're not at the city, they're at the airport. Pretty simple to me, so.
Mr. President?
Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, what Jeff's describing is absolutely correct, and it's called an opportunity cost. Because we don't have them here working, we are losing something. I don't know how to quantify it, but it exists and it is a loss.
Thank you. Anything else on the presentation of airport wages? Okay. Everybody okay that we move on? We will move on to item F, which is providing direction for paradigm auto code violations. Mr. Krabic, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So at the last city council meeting, the council directed staff to provide additional information regarding parking surface requirements for paradigm auto and their U-Haul business, and to discuss a potential land swap with the owner. Staff has scheduled a meeting with Mr. Schmidt this Friday to discuss those options. In the report that I provided to council, I did voice my concerns about allowing crush- In the report that I provided to council, I did voice my concerns about allowing crushed material in this location, as it is the town center zoning district, even if it were to be coded, as other properties could do the same thing if, if it were permitted or allowed to be permitted in the future. And from staff's perspective, this would probably not be in the best interest of our downtown and around our downtown area. I think that there are potential opportunities in the future in our industrial zoning district for crushed materials potentially be coded, and I believe the planning commission is going to be reviewing that sometime in the near future. Staff did provide another option to, within the memo to the property owner, that they could petition to rezone the property to Makers and Employment Zoning District, which is north of the railroad tracks there, everything's south of the railroad tracks and that location's town center. But if it were to be rezoned, there would be opportunities for potential looser restrictions that they could ask for in that area. From a staff perspective, a variance would not be a good option, as it has to meet practical difficulty standards that are not cost-related. So with that, staff is recommending to city council that the property owner be given 90 days to initiate a land swap, or submit all applicable zoning applications to the community development department. At the conclusion of the 90 days, if either option has not been initiated, the property owner may request additional time from city council, or staff would then initiate legal action from the city attorney, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Hearing none. We have a recommendation from staff to allow the property owner an additional 90 days to either initially, initiate a land swap, or submit a zoning application change. At the conclusion of 90 days, if either option has not been initiated, the property owner could get, ask for more time, or staff will initiate legal action from the city attorney.
I'll move with Jeff, recommendations?
Thank you. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stanglin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next up is 7G, looking for direction on contested nuisance assessments. Mr. Kramvik?
Thank you, Mr. President. So city council adopted the resolution with a full assessment amount, and staff indicated that additional information would be provided at the next meeting for properties that are disputing their assessments. The first three properties that staff will discuss here, they had turned their, essentially sheet for contesting the nuisance assessment in prior to the public hearing. The four after had turned it in, I guess after the public hearing, but staff has still included those and has made recommendations. So with that, I'll go through each one of them, provide kind of a brief summary on each one of them, and then I certainly can answer any questions at the end. So the first one, 523 Grove Street, the property owner was sent citations for exterior structure issues, did the project without a permit. This was done by a property manager, since the property owners kind of reclaimed ownership of the property or responsibility for their property, fired that individual, and obtained the proper permits to complete the project. Project has been inspected and is completed, staff is recommending waiving the nuisance assessment of $675. 420 Quinn Street, this property owner has been working on the renovation of this home for the past 10 years, and was sent citations for junk and debris, also for stormwater violations this past year. Fees were not forgiven or recommended for this property during the 2022 assessment period, as there is no improvement of the property. Staff has since met with the property owner onsite multiple times, and there are expectations going forward related to the city code. Staff has seen a vast improvement over the past few months at this property. One of the expectations is kind of cleaning up the junk and debris weekly at the property. So with that, there has been some improvement and, and some work with the property owner, so staff is recommending waiving the full amount for the stormwater and site control violations, and half the amount for junk and debris. One thing to note is the property is on notice for the vacant building registry, so if the property does not meet requirements for grass and completely have the structure done by the spring, there would be potential for that $7,000 fine from the vacant building registry. Next property is 720 Laurel Street. This property owner had obtained a demolition permit for a dilapidated garage. It was certainly a blighted garage and condemnable. They were in contact with staff, however, the junk and debris from inside the structure were left outside for several weeks. Since the citation was issued, the property has been cleaned up, so staff is recommending waiving the nuisance assessment, this is the first time they've had a citation. Next property is 303 J Street. So this property has had multiple issues for junk and debris, long grass and weeds, and zoning violations for a number of years. The current violations started in October of 2022, when an illegal fence was constructed without a permit. The property owner did include a letter directed to staff as well as city council. At the October 16, 2023 city council meeting, council did direct staff to apply a $300 citation monthly until the fence was corrected. Staff certainly tried to work with this property owner and gave a number of months to reach out to city council members or planning commission members, in, in the event that the code could be changed for fencing. That didn't, there's been no code change, they're still in violation of the fencing ordinance, as well as vehicles in the rear yard. So as none of the items have been corrected, staff does not recommend waiving the nuisance assessments for this property. The next one is 1223 Rosewood Street, it was brought to staff's attention in November of 2023, there was an individual living in the property that had not received a rental license. The owner did reach out to staff and indicate the person was assisting with maintenance in there, was not paying rent, that was one of the reasons he did not believe he needed a rental license. I originally recommended reinstating the fees, as the owner has had to pass rental license at this property and knew the rental licensing rules. Certainly could have been some confusion there. After reviewing his letter, I do believe there are some communication issues. One of the issues was his email is going to my junk email, so I couldn't respond to him with some of his questions prior to the meeting. So with some of the confusion there, and, and with the expectation that he knows rental licenses are required going forward, staff recommends waiving the nuisance assessment for this property. 15284 Beaver Dam Road, this property has had numerous issues over the course of several years, this is the one that had very concerning septic problems with the pole shed. The previous owner did not comply with the septic requirements, and also ignored correspondence from city staff. At the December 4, 2023 city council meeting, city council directed staff to cite $100 per business day for non-compliance. At the time, we believed that this property was draining their, their sewage out a drain tile, there was no permit from the county and no information that we had otherwise. So in August of 2024, the property was sold contract for deed to Mr. Brett Canfield, he's the one that submitted this, he's now the owner of the property. So since that time, staff had been working with Mr. Canfield and bringing the property into compliance. It was determined the pole shed had a non-permitted holding tank, it was never certified at the county, but the tank was recently pumped and inspected, and a certified septic inspector passed the inspections. The county's not requiring any other documentation. The city of Brainerd building official required a pressure test to ensure the plumbing was not leaking, it did pass the inspections for that. So it is completely compliant, and, and based on the inspections that were done, it was not leaking into the, into the ground, so that was certainly good to hear on that part of it. Staff was made aware last week that someone who was living in the pole shed is an unlicensed rental owner working with the property owner for compliance. So with that, staff does recommend waiving all pending nuisance assessments for the non-compliant, compliant septic, but leaving the $875 for an unlicensed rental violation. Significant amount of time has been spent by, spent by staff on this property, as well as postage, so staff does not recommend waiving this fee in the future if the, the rental is corrected. And the last one is 1023 South Sixth Street. The current owner of the property is Mariah Steele, the previous people living on the property were squatters, had an unlicensed and operable vehicle, that's shown on the screen there. The squatters were removed and the issue has been resolved, and there's been no issues at the property since. So staff is recommending waiving the nuisance assessment for this property. And I can't answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Any questions of staff on the nuisance assessments? Mr. Chesak? Well, I have a, I have one question from, from staff, if I can, Jeff, and then I'll turn it right back to you.
Problem.
Okay. Mr. Kramvik, do these need to be, we don't need to vote en masse, correct? We could take each one individual?
You could take each one of them individually.
Okay, and that would certainly be my recommendation, but Mr. Chesak, you have the floor.
I was gonna move all staff recommendations, we approved.
There you go, we have a motion on the floor, and a second by O'Day. Any discussion? And you just heard mine, I'm gonna vote against it, because I know of some of these. I know more information than Mr. Kramvik has given us, and some of them I just wouldn't waive, and, and I'm sorry, so I'll vote against this motion. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I'll be voting against it too, and primarily because of 1420 Quinn Street. I, it's, we say 10 years, but the government started telling him to finish the project 10 and a half, 11 years ago, and he still hasn't. I, I just think it's been far too long to be giving him forgiveness for something that he knows he has been doing wrong for going on 11, 12 years now. I, I just don't see it, so I'll be voting no on the en masse approval.
Thank you. Cariter, you had your hand up? Mike O'Day?
Would you guys be into a friendly amendment on pulling out?
I'll amend my motion.
Yeah, just pull the motion.
I'll amend my motion. What's that? I'll amend my motion.
Oh, amended or pull it?
I'll amend my motion.
Amended, Mr. Chesak?
My motion to, all of staff recommendations except the Quinn Street, well, when Mr. Johnson referenced, we'll pull that one off, off of my motion.
Thank you. The second, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'll still vote against it, but it's because there's other ones that I know of. I know the Beaver Dam one was dumping raw sewage onto the ground for years, and to say that it was sold after we put all the fines on it, I mean, what a great, what a great deal that is. So it, it's unfortunate, and I, I would certainly expect higher than $875 on that one. Mr. Kramvik?
So that's what we had thought was happening?
It was. That's, I'm not, I've been there. I mean, you could say something different if you'd like to.
Oh yeah, if, if you believe, believe that, and, and you've been, and seen it, you know, certainly...
I believe that property has been a great tragedy for probably not as long as the one on Quinn's, but that, that's the one where they race motorcycles and do all kinds of stuff that they shouldn't do, including, well, anyway, I think the, I think when you start dumping raw sewage on the ground, you know there's a problem, you know there, it doesn't take a, a sanitary engineer to know that's wrong, so.
I'll amend my motion.
I like it. I, I would just as soon go right down the line, but I'll, I'll vote against the motion, but Mr. Chesak, you wish to amend?
I'll amend my motion to remove the Beaver Dam Road. I address as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, so the motion is to pull that one as well? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, that one is pulled. Okay, now we're back to the five, correct, Mr. Kramvik? Any discussion on those five? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Mr. Johnson, you wanna go first, or do you want me to?
Yeah, I, I'd move that we maintain the fee, the fines on the 1420 Quinn Street property.
Totally.
It was a thousand dollars or so.
$1,025.
$1,025, and we assess that, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day?
Chesak.
Chesak, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Chesak. Chairman Johnson?
As, as I already stated, this has been a problem, this is in my neighborhood, I hear from my constituents on it all the time, since before I was elected. I'm the second longest-serving council member up here, and I've been hearing complaints about this since before I was even elected. Something's gotta give, and he's gotta get the project done, and we can't just be giving in to him over and over and over again, so I, I just think we should maintain the fines, that he rightfully accrued himself by his actions.
Thank you, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Chesak?
So if this doesn't pass, are we just back to trying another motion on it?
Yep.
Okay.
We have, we have to give something.
Yep.
Because we're, we're, as of now, we are assessing the property the full amount.
Yep.
Which, in Mr. Johnson's recommendation, would be just fine. So if we don't do a motion, it, it's on the assessment, which is why we do it the way we do it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. My recommendation on the Beaver Dam property, since this has been a nightmare for decades, would be to, would be, and to give the new property owner a break, because thankfully there is a new property owner, would be to split the assessment. Thereby, the total assessment is $21,000. Honest to God, it's lucky these people are not in jail, and split that down to $10,500. That gives the new property owner some incentive to finish it off, but then, I suspect the new property owner had to know there was an issue when he walked onto the property. Mr. Kramvik?
So, so yeah, so recently, and this is why it was part of my recommendation, it was an unpermitted holding tank that was installed, or I believe it was, it certainly could be different, that was happening four years ago, and I know there's been a lot of issues with motorbikes on there in the past.
And, and unapproved rentals.
And unapproved, and unapproved rentals.
And I could probably give you more.
Within the last two weeks here, we did get certification from the county that the holding tank was pumped, that, that this property leads from. It was inspected by a certified septic installer, so it was good on the county side of it, and then we did require our building official to, they hired a plumber to run a pressure test on the system, to make sure it wasn't leaking, and was going towards the, the holding tank. So it was, it was approved from that part of it, I can't say what was happening in the past.
That's why I'm offering, I'm suggesting, although I can't make a motion, a $10,500 reduction, and again, if it was up to my recommendation, there'd be people in jail for pumping raw sewage in a wetland on Beaver Dam Road. But anyway, anybody else can make a motion on this?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, being there's a new owner?
Yep.
Are you suggesting that they should have been made aware of this and somehow done something to remedy it, or you're putting the burden on the new owner now, by this?
I presume the new owner was aware of it.
And, so why then, but your, your more, your idea here is then to assess the...
Give him a half break. Give him, cut it in half. I presume the purchase price, you could not have bought this property, Jeff, without knowing that there was, it was dumping raw sewage onto the ground. It was Aaron Brockovich, okay, so, and the, if the new owner didn't know about it, this a little bit like my email went to junk. I mean, you know, it's, it's...
Well, that's what he said.
I know that, I know that's what he said, I've heard it before. Anyway, I think this, I think the new owner is, should be commended to the tune of $10,500. Absolutely, I think that's a phenomenal thing they're doing, this has been a terrible property, but on the other side of the coin, to not give, to not give any kind of, that's like saying I, I quit shooting people, so I, because I sold my gun. Well, I, great, you bought it, but you had to know it. So that's my, that's my point. Everybody knew it. Mr. Kramvik knew it. It was a, it was a, this has been a disaster, but you guys can do what you want, I'm, I'll either vote up or drown, but I'm not gonna make a motion.
Well, Mr. President, I will make the motion for reducing the citation amount to be assessed to $10,500.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Reddell?
Does that include the rental part of it?
I would say yes, in my...
The total is 21, so.
Yes, the answer is yes. I, I support this, I think that it gives a break to the guy, a half-price break on a very large assessment, to put towards the fixing of it, but truth be told, the seller should have taken the burden on, not the citizens of Brainerd, is my argument. Gabe Johnson should not have to pay for this, what the seller did, so, and I'm just looking out for you, Gabe.
Thank you, thank you.
Cariter?
So the rental violations were for the previous owner?
The rental violations were for the previous owner, but we did find out that the, that it was being rented by the current owner.
And, and so there would have been new violations by the current? So the previous owner owned it and rented to the current owner?
No, but he rented to somebody else, so he was illegally renting both structures, he sold it to this new person, this, it was, it's always been advertised as a bonus living area, when, when we do see it, and certainly we keep an eye on this property quite often. So I'm not sure if the new owner was unaware that they couldn't rent that location out or not, staff did include that with the information that I did give to the owner when we met with him. The main thing we discussed was the septic, so it's possible that he wasn't hearing that part of it, but certainly we were made aware of the rental and are, are working through that issue now as well.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, I'll support the motion. I, and I just, I don't know what to do with this, because it's another one that's been a disaster, environmental disaster, literally, for years. And I just want to say that he bought it contract for deed, to me was a bit of a red flag, because it reminded me of that tobacco license kerfuffle we had there for a couple of years, where it's just a shell game. You're just moving around, putting a different name on a literal piece of crap and never have to be accountable for it. And I, so I'll, I'll support this motion, but I don't know what the right answer is, the perfect answer.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Anything else? I have one question, I missed it on the first motion, Mr. Krambeck. Like, property number one, where they did some work without permits, and we waived the fee, all of it, but they still have to pay for their permits, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that there's still, everybody has to, if there's a roof permit or a whatever, everybody has to do that. All right, we are on to number H, which is a PNF agenda item that we moved. Uh, let me pull it up here. It is, um, the, what is it, Mr. Johnson? Is adopting a resolution reaffirming the purchase of Roberts property and discussion of the wellhead protection partner grant. This is a PNF item, but you said you had nothing from the, from the committee. Is there anything you want to add to what's in our packet?
Yeah, on Wednesday, this wasn't, it was presented on Wednesday, and there was really no information, so the committee didn't really have much to talk about or deliberate over to make a recommendation to the full council. So it's, it stayed on our, our council committee report, but since we didn't have any of the information that is now included in the packet.
Yep.
Last Wednesday, we just, I just thought it would be better putting it on the full council agenda.
Then let's turn it over to staff. We've got Connie Hillman, our finance director, Danny Locke from the PUC, the finance manager. Would either of you like to speak to what is in our packet? And then I believe we have a, do we have a rec, yeah, we do have some recommendations from staff. So we'll start with Connie.
Okay. So the city has been in the process of purchasing the Roberts property for years. This item is on the agenda for two reasons. When council made the motion during the September third council meeting to finalize the purchase, only one of the two Roberts parcels was listed in the motion. During the many discussions of the purchase of this property, both parcels owned by Robert Sand and Gravel were included. It was just the September third motion that left out the second parcel of the purchase. In order to have a clear record of purchase approval, Attorney Lengel prepared the attached resolution. The other reason is how to pay for the purchase of the property. The total acreage being purchased is thirty-five point two-four acres for four hundred and eight thousand dollars. The main reason for the purchase of this property is for wellhead protection purposes. Included in the packet was a letter from Mr. Aaron Meyer with the Minnesota Rural Water Association, and Mr. Meyer is also a member of the wellhead protection team that put together the city's wellhead protection plan that was approved by council at the July fifteenth meeting. Also included in the packet was an executive summary delineation and vulnerability report. Both items detail why it is in the best interest of the city to purchase the property. If you look at attachment one B, the outline in red, which looks like a finger pointing at something, can you go to attachment one B, Sean? So the red that looks like somebody's pointing at something is the, is the, sorry, is the emergency response area in the wetland protection program, and the blue squarish outline shows the Roberts property, which is almost forty percent of the emergency response area. So we don't think that there is any question that is in the best interest of the city to own the property. The utility can apply for a grant to help buy, pay for the property. The grant, through the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources, would put a permanent protection on approximately twenty-five point two-four acres for future well structures and underground infrastructure. The grant would mean that the city would pay about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for the thirty-five acres. The ten acres that is not in permanent protection would not be specified, specifically identified in the grant. There was also been discussion about not wanting to apply for the grant so the property could be redeveloped. The topography of the property is unique, and the southern portion of the property is considered to be in a floodplain, making the property difficult to develop. Also per the letter from Mr. Meyer and the executive summary of delineation and vulnerability report includes the reason as to why the property shouldn't be developed and be only for wetland protection. Challenges with the grant. A signed purchase agreement was needed in order to apply. Attorney Lengel did not get the fully executed purchase agreement until about October ninth. The grant is not a reimbursable grant, meaning the purchase of the property cannot be complete, the closing cannot occur before the grant is awarded. The grant has now become competitive, so funding is not guaranteed, and the grant process is about thirty to sixty days. So with the purchase agreement not being fully executed until October ninth, and the Roberts want to close on the property as soon as possible, extending the closing date could be problematic for the seller. That being said, it's paying full price of the four hundred and eight thousand rather than about a hundred and sixteen thousand, the best use of city funds. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the property purchase agreement related to the purchase of the Roberts property. The second is to discuss the risks associated with requesting to postpone the closing date of the property to apply for the grant. And if the council's direction is to request a postponement of the closing, an authorization to apply for the wellhead protection partner grant with the Board of Water and Soil Resources.
Before we move on to other staff members, like Danny's here, thank you for coming, and our attorney, let's see if there's any questions of Connie. Because that was quite a, that was quite a lot of information. I see why you wanted this up. Okay. Danny, anything you wish to add to what Connie said?
Nothing additional.
All right. Thanks for coming. Attorney Lengel, anything you want to add?
Well, I, the, the resolution, as Connie indicated, is, is to really make a clear record about the purchase of this property, the two parcels, two parcels. So regardless of what the discussion is about the grant, I'd appreciate if we could get that much accomplished here tonight, so we have a clear council direction on record that we're buying these two parcels from the, from the Roberts. The other part about the, the grants, yeah, delaying the closing is not going to go well with the sellers. And if that's the way the council wants to go, then I can certainly talk at that point about some, maybe some options going forward. If we go deal with the resolution first, I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, Mr. Chesek.
Yeah, I think for Joe, this one qualify based on negotiations with the grant and the asking to postpone as a closed session under property purchase with it? Is that something we want to look at or not?
Councilmember Chesek, yeah, we actually could, if we get to that point, if we're going to talk about perhaps asking to extend the timeline for closing on this, in which case that may very well need to involve some tweaks to the terms of the, of the purchase. So yes, at that point, we're, we're into the provisions of the open meeting law where we could have a closed session.
And then we could actually go into that tonight, if we needed to.
Yes, we can mod, we can amend the agenda and have that tonight, if you like.
I think that answers my questions. Uh, let's see. And then if we do purchase, are we going to determine if it's a public utility purchase for one part and city for the other? Is that on the resolution?
No, the, so by charter, the city owns all of it.
Right. But the funds, funds are coming?
The funds are separate from the resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman O'Day.
I remember this coming up at least two years ago, maybe it was three years ago. Originally, it was, we were going to offer three hundred thousand dollars for the property. The discussion about this grant was brought up at some point, but it was too restrictive. And I, from what I remember, the agreement that we came to, either in a meeting or, or in BPU's, maybe, discussion in their meeting, was that once we purchased the land, we would, we would find the sites that we would use in the future for wells, and then look into the rest of the property of whether we can do some development, or maybe it, since it's a budding parkland, maybe some of it becomes parkland. There's a lot of different opportunities with, with that property. So if, if, if we're going to use a grant that's going to cuff us into just leaving it as is, and it's a beautiful chunk of property, I, I don't, I don't think we should go after that particular grant. So I think, going back to the original discussion, three hundred thousand dollars was supposed to come out of BPU funds and purchase the property. Now the prop, now the property's up to four hundred and eight thousand dollars, maybe that's why this is prompting discussion on this, but I, I feel the same way about that as we did back then. I think in the end, there will be some property that is able to be developed, whether it's a big chunk or a little chunk, makes no big difference to me, but I think some of this money will, in turn, get returned in the future.
Thank you. I have a question for you, Danny. I'm sorry, can you come up to the microphone, and you have to state your name and all that? And Sean, can you pull the map back up? You have to state your name.
Danny Locke, finance manager.
Where's the well in this?
There are no wells currently.
Where would the well be?
It would be deter, undetermined at this point.
Undetermined at this point?
Correct.
My question of Finance Director Hillman earlier in the week is, as far as the Roberts are concerned, if they get their four hundred and eight thousand, we have fulfilled the contract, to my knowledge, although we'll let the attorney answer that. My question to Finance Director Hillman was, why can't we have two purchase agreements? One for the eighty percent of the property that we're never going to develop, because it's in the floodplain, which is likely somewhere where the well's going to go, which, by the way, it's my understanding, we need this well. We should probably start that, with that. Not only, you're the PUC guy. We need this well.
Chris Evans is too.
Chris Evans is here. That's right. Oh, man, I'm sorry.
Just the finance guy.
All right. I'm sorry. If, you know what? My apologies, Mr. Evans. If this, if this question is more for you, please have a seat. Somebody, please tell me, we absolutely need this? Yes? I mean, I was under the impression we do.
Well, it's, it's twofold. Number one, for future proofing, because this would be potentially for at least two new wells. With that said, there's a better-than-probable chance, right now, based on the geology, that the quality of the water on this property would be less, would have less content of manganese and iron. So it's, it's, it's a more pure water, so that would help us with our overall water quality, plus, again, future proofing for, you know, next generations, what have you, as, you know, as the city develops and grows, or if the chemistry for some of the existing older wells are such that, you know, we can retire them, or, or at least shut them down to get the, a better mix, better quality of the water.
Thank you. I'll take that as a yes. My, my question then is, can we not have two purchase agreements equalling four hundred and eight thousand? The, the part that's developable, separate from the parts where the wells go, and then write the grant for the second part of it?
Well, unfortunately, I can't say exactly where the wells are going. They could be in the one part that we're making the assumption is the wetland area, or it could well be that the second site might be within that extra ten acres that is considered developable at this point.
Moving target.
Correct.
Dang. Thank, thank you. Danny, I'm sorry, Mr. Evans, I am so sorry, I, I didn't mean to pull Danny up here when, when here you are, so thank you.
He, he needs the practice.
I need, thank you for coming up, Danny.
I was just going to say, there's a well, so my property butts up against this. There's an easement in between our property and up on that would be the, the northwest corner of my property would be the nor, the northeast corner of this, this property, and there's a well up on the very top of the hill there. So you picture the well being down closer to the, the waterline, but it could be anywhere on there, where it's the highest part of the hill, anywhere in the middle, it's, it's just, depends on what's underneath. So it could end up in all the developable areas, too.
Dang. Thank you. Mr. Havagor, our new public works director.
Hi, thank you, President. I was just commenting that maybe we just purchase it and then subdivide it later, when we know where the well will go. And from Councilman O'Day's comment, great that we don't want to get a grant where it restricts us, but we subdivide after we get it, we do some studies where the well would go, and we move forward from there. That's all.
I wonder if that would fulfill the grant qualifications. Mr. O'Day is shaking his head, no.
Just to reiterate, that the grant is not a reimbursable grant. So the property cannot be closed on before we get awarded the grant. That's the whole problem with the grant. So if, if council decides, you know what, we don't want to risk this, we want to get this done, we need it for wellhead protection, we'll pay the full amount. And then there's no restrictions, and Danny and I will work on how to come up with the extra three hundred and some thousand dollars to pay for it. That, that's the kicker with the grant. And also, it's now, it's, it's, it is compatible, or compa, yeah, it's, it's.
Competitive.
Competitive, thank you.
So we might not get anything anyway.
And so we might not get anything anyway.
Right on. Chairman Johnson.
I mean, it's a lot of decisions in this one agenda item, and I know these conversations with Roberts have been going on, on for decades, but this current purchase in the, in the form that it is, was it from back to two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen? Because I know when we started the negotiations with them, when we, when we assigned the Public Utility Commission to take the lead on the negotiations, our community development director and city administrator at that time started showing this land prematurely to potential developers.
Enthusiastic.
Very enthusiastic about the opportunities with this land, so the Public Utility Commission asked us to hold back on showing it to developers until something gets done, and that was, that was over five years ago now. I just don't know why we don't have any questions answered about wellheads or developable land or where, like what the plan is for this property when we've been working on this purchase for five years? And now tonight, we're supposed to decide, grant or no grant, all the land, some of the land, delay the purchase now that after it's been delayed? How many times have we been close, Joe? Twenty, right?
We've never gotten this close. Okay, I'll tell you that right now, because we've got a purchase agreement that's signed, and we're supposed to close this week, so we're, we're right there.
So time, there is a timeliness to this question.
There is very much a timeliness, yes.
You'll be next, Mr. Chesek.
Yeah, so where I'm sitting, I don't know. I, I'm with Mike on, on the grant that locks the land up to being unused in perpetuity. That's just a long time. That's, that's a long, that's, until we're swallowed by the sun, nothing can be put there, right? That's a big decision to make. I do understand that we need it, and we do have all our current wells there, that we do need to protect them, so I support the resolution to purchase the land, but I don't know about this grant, and now that we've gone from three hundred to four hundred, I don't know where the money would come from to buy it anyway. But, because we're time-sensitive, we got to make decisions. So that's, that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Mr. Chesek. And then Mr. Krambeck.
I think this one's for Joe again. If we approve the resolution for purchase, it still can stall out after that. Is that correct?
Correct. The resolution is, is, it's a paper issue. It's just to make sure that we've got something in the file with a clear indication from the city council, we're buying these two parcels, because there was some confusion in the record. And frankly, the closing agent always likes a certified resolution anyway, even though it's not technically required for the city of Brainerd, because you're a charter city, but whatever. We had some confusion in the record, this clarifies the confusion, but you are right, it does not specifically deal with timing of the acquisition.
Yeah, I guess the reason I'm asking is, if, if we approve the resolution to purchase, Yeah, I guess the reason I'm asking is, if, if we approve the resolution to purchase, which I, I would love to be able to get money from the state to help pay for a significant portion of it, and then, of course, that has the contingencies where we can't do anything with a significant number of acres of it. If we, if we find, if we did go forward with the purchase resolution, and it stalled out, we would still have the option then of applying for the grant. So that, that's kind of a ma, a maybe if.
After James.
Yeah. But I just wanted to make that point. Would that be fair to say if it does, if it stalls out?
After Connie.
It would be available for the grant opportunity still?
If you can answer his question, please. Mr. Langel.
Well, the availability, if it stalls out and we don't close, consistent with the purchase agreement, then they have potential argument to sell to somebody else. And that point has been raised, that these gentlemen, they're ready to move on. You know, one of them, they're, they're done. They're, they just want to get this over with. And they want to get it over with now.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kravik, you had your hand up next, then Connie Hillman, our Finance Director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And Chris and Danny might be able to comment a little bit further. But I did sit as part of the wellhead protection team, with our consultants going over this property and the, and the Roberts property. And I did ask them, point blank, if we should develop this area for residential development, and they did not recommend that, any type of development in here, because it's part of the emergency response area one. So that was a recommendation from the consultants. Now, you know, I can't say where those wellheads are going to be, and if there could be some development in there. But I just did want to point that out and make council aware of that. I know Danny and Chris might be able to, to answer that a little bit further. I believe, and also could clarify this, there might be potential for park or trails in that area, as part of this grant. But, you know, there might be potential for that. But I did ask that question, and you guys can certainly clarify.
Certainly. We'll go to Connie Hillman next. She had her hand up next.
So just when we talk about stalling out, if we lose the purchase agreement, we can't apply for the grant either. You need to have a signed purchase agreement before you can apply for the grant. But you can't close on the grant, or you can't close on the property until the grant's awarded. So there's kind of a chicken and egg thing. That's why it was so important to know when the grant was fully executed, and we didn't have the time to get it onto council to actually apply for the grant, per our city policy. The other thing, we do believe that you can purchase credits back. So if we go into this grant, and we permanently restrict it, and then later we decide, oh no, we need to develop this, there is a way that we can buy those credits back from the grant. So it's not in perpetuity that it will stay there. I think the one thing, if we can get the resolution to clarify the record, that would be number one. And then we can continue, continue the discussion on how we proceed with the grant or not the grant, et cetera.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, anything you want to add to what Mr. Kravik suggested you may want to add to, about?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Again, not totally restrictive, as we could do some park and trail work on the property. I guess the only other thing is that, you know, again, trying to future proof that, you know, it could be at least two wells. So, I mean, initially it would be one well, but, you know, this, depending on how, the, the quality of the water, et cetera, and, you know, expansions that, it, it could be multiple well sites. And then, of course, there's another part of this, it's a real, a potential realignment project for some water and sewer lines, for another part of the environmental mitigation.
Thank you. Mr. Langel, if we approve the sale, and then motion to apply for the grant, what's the chances of the Roberts holding out three to six weeks to get paid? Because we can't consummate the purchase agreement, per the rules that come with the grant?
Mr. President, if you go that route, then I would suggest that we go into closed session and start talking about modifications of the purchase agreement, to see if we can convince the Roberts to stay in the game.
Thank you. All right. Anybody down on this end? Anybody down on this end? Tiffany Stengel?
Oh, well, I, I would like to kind of get us maybe moving a little bit, but I move that we adopt the attached resolution approving the property purchase agreement.
Second. We have a motion by Stengel, a second by Johnson. Sting line.
It's okay.
It's okay. It's okay.
It's past my bedtime. Thank you for being patient with me. Mr. Evans and Ms. Stengel, line. We have a motion to ad, adopt the attached resolution approving the property purchase agreement. It's been seconded by Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stengel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The second recommendation from staff, that, I'm sorry, that resolution is adopted. The second recommendation from staff is regarding postponing the closing date of the property to apply for the grant. And you heard Mr. Langel suggest that if we wish to discuss that, we go into closed session this evening. Does anybody have anything they want to do on item two? And that would also include item three, which is the actual closing. We're hearing nothing else on this item, so we will look to close this item. And, yes?
I just, I, I move we go into closed session after this adjourned to regular meeting to talk about that.
Okay. We have a motion by Chesak, second by Johnson. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
And then, just so we get the proper statute, when we...
We'll look for Mr. Langel to help us with that one. He'll look that up while we're going on to item eight, public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Usually, we like to have you keep it to three to five minutes. It's 9:06, and we will open the public forum. If you're online, welcome. Star six will let us know that you are willing and wanting to speak, and star three then will unmute you. I'll ask a second time if there's anybody who wishes to speak to us this evening on something we haven't already discussed. And I will ask a third and final time if anybody wishes to come forward to speak during the public forum time. I will close the public forum and turn to my right, and we'll go to staff reports. We'll turn it first to, let's start with Eric Sharpentier online.
Nothing to add this evening?
Thank you. Chief Olms?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Police Chief, anything?
Yes, couple of items to add. First of all, I was absent from the last council meeting, but my understanding was, there was a request for an update on where we, the city is with recouping some of our losses from the damaged flashing beacon sign on Oak Street. I checked the criminal court file underway for that driver, and the city prosecutor had submitted to the courts a claim of restitution on behalf of the city. That criminal case is still open. There has not been a ruling or a disposition yet, so maybe more to come later.
Thank you.
Second thing, so as you know, our department monthly has a Booyah recognition award for our own department staff when they go above and beyond, and we like to recognize our staff internally. And Sergeant Paul Rojer had forwarded to me an incident that a couple street department employees assisted the police department on. And it really stood out that it was very appreciated. And I had the thought that there's no reason why we can't necessarily extend a, a Booyah recognition outside of the police department. So I just wanted a moment to recognize street department workers Chad Lardy and Louis Schlegel. And I'll just read Sergeant Rojer's comments on kind of where they went above and beyond. And that is, Brainerd officers responded to a v, two-vehicle accident on Mill Avenue, with one vehicle in a private residence's yard, and the other blocking the roadway. On arrival, Sergeant Rojer observed a street department vehicle with its lights activated, helping to direct the flow of traffic, and later found out both street department workers coned off the area, helping to prevent vehicles from mo, running over the vehicle, crash debris. These actions helped officers in preserving debris evidence in the roadway, prevented a backup of vehicles on the busy road, and assisted in getting the vehicle out of the roadway in a fast manner. Booyah to Chad Lardy and Louis Schlegel for their proactive approach to helping another city department, along with their service to the citizens of Brainerd. And it, it, it might seem like a simple thing, but there's a lot going on with these crash investigations, and for them not to have to worry, and about what the street department was already doing for them was very appreciated. So wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Sean Strong, our ITGIS Director, or anything for this evening?
Nothing today.
Jesse Dean, our City Engineer, and, well, I think technically, there's no and anymore.
No, sir. So one quick update. We do have a storm sewer outfall that has been scouring an area right next to a pretty large sanitary sewer main, next to the Evergreen Cemetery. And we have our contractor that's going to be starting the repairs here later this week. And then following that, our engineering team's going to start working on survey and designing of the permanent repairs for that storm sewer outfall. So that's all.
Thank you. Connie Hillman, Finance Director.
Yes. Just a reminder that all polls, polling locations will open tomorrow. Be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Election judges report at 5:30 AM, and will be there until everything closes out, usually until about 10 o'clock. Just wanted to give a huge thank you to all our election judges, as well as the entities that allow us to use their buildings as polling locations. We cannot do it without them, and appreciate all that they do. Also, the council will need to hold a special council meeting to canvass the general election results. The meeting must be held between November 8th and November 15th. We need to have a quorum of council members. Staff's recommendation would be to hold the meeting on Monday, November 13th, around 11:30 or 12, so we could kind of piggyback on the PNF meeting. And we would for sure have three council members there.
Well, did you say, what, what was the date?
It has to be held between November 8th and November 15th.
You recommended the 13th.
And I recommend the 13th.
Okay. Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry to hold the election canvas special meeting on 11:13 at?
11:30.
11:30. Any discussion?
Yeah, when the PNF takes the six minutes to do their meeting, why don't we have a...
Might go outside and have a cig.
Yeah, you have to build in smoke break for PNF. Hearing no legitimate discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? You've got a canvassing meeting. Anything else?
Just to make sure that we will have at least four members of the council present at that time.
I'll be there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'll be there to screw things up. Mike Havagorst, welcome aboard. How'd we do on the, your first day?
The first, it's been great. Jesse's been just amazing. Gave me a good tour of all our facilities and parks and staff, and it's just really blessed to be here, and thank you all. Thank you. I don't have...
Thank you. James Kravik, Community Development Director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I just wanted to note that the EDA will be touring the Just for Crypto facility this Thursday, November 7th at 1:00 PM. The city council and BPU commission has also been invited to attend, and it has been publicly noticed.
Thank you very much. Joe Langel, our, what was that, Mr. Mayor?
Will I need ear protection?
They haven't. I know that. They provided. Mr. Langel, from the City Attorney's Office?
Nothing here, thank you.
Our HR Director Schubert?
Nothing to add to my written report.
Never to be skipped again. Chris Evans, our Public Utilities Director, thank you. My apologies. Yeah, I know, you can give me the evil eye, I deserve it. My, my packet says Danny Lockit.
Well, he's a good man. Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to add to my report at this time.
Thank you. Danny, you're here. Anything you want to add? All right. Minister Broyles?
Eric Sharpentier.
I already went, I did him already. I'm sorry. Didn't you read your packet?
So it's been stated already, but I just want, again, I want to extend a warm and enthusiastic welcome to Mike. He's going to be a great addition to the team. And as Chief Davis alluded to, you're inheriting a great team. So we're expecting great things, and we're happy to have you. So welcome aboard. That's all, Mr. President.
Holy mackerel. Well, the moment we've all been waiting for, the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
Well, I already used up my one joke, so.
You got a joke?
Calm down now, I'm trying to speak.
Play the tape back.
Uh, I just wanted to let the council know that we were asked by the YMCA to give a letter of support for the Minnesota Deed Child Care EDA grant. There wasn't time for that, for the council to do so. So I did so on behalf of just the mayor. I wasn't comfortable in speaking for the council as well. So, uh, from the mayor, we did send one of those. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. And I, hopefully, the rest of the city supports them as well. Great addition to the city they have become. Halloween, Kelly Bevins, dangerous decibels right outside your front window.
That's awesome.
It was like being at the Who concert.
It was pretty, pretty, pretty sweet. But I want to give a, a shout out to multiple people. North Brainerd was a happening place. Zion Lutheran had their trunk or treat, about 100 kids in line for that. The Franklin Arts Center had their handicap accessible event as well. And then, of course, Kelly Bevins was handing out candy, and sucking back, back a cocktail or two. But just, as always, great. And I want to thank everyone that was out there, having a good time, for being safe. And also, a lot of teenagers out. And some people I heard were saying, you know, I saw too many teenagers. I actually liked it. I thought it was, it was pretty cool to see a bunch of kids that are maybe at that age where, all right, you're just out getting candy. But still, pretty, pretty interesting to see as many as we did this year. And, and I fully support it. I like kids getting outside and having some fun, so. And then lastly, ho, the Hometown Holidays celebration is Saturday, November 30th. 10:00 AM is the start. The Downtown Window Walk will go from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. There will also be deals and whatnot happening as well. And then at 5:00 PM, this is a Saturday, so it's a switch from our normal Friday, the City Hall tree lighting ceremony will happen as well. So we'll have that whole thing going on. I heard that Kelly Bevins might be handing out hot chocolate, hopefully.
We're hoping to.
Hopefully.
Hot chocolate, cider, and s'mores.
Should be, should be a lot of fun. So that is Saturday, November 30th, which is Small Business Saturday. So a, a great event to partake in. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chesak, any objection? Are we starting with you this evening?
None whatsoever. We got a, Public Utilities had decided to increase water rates 20% coming up December 1st. That was at our last meeting on Tuesday. And then, there was a double, doubleheader yesterday, in case y'all missed it, the wild one in overtime. Their kicker is, hasn't missed a field goal or an extra point yet. And, I was kidding, wild kicker. But I had to have one thing in, in recognition of Mayor Bedeau, the, what, does, does anybody know how old the Minnesota Vikings' starting quarterback is? He's darn old. There you go. That's all I got. There you go, Mayor. I definitely never have that time back again. Moving on. He's stunned. He's stunned.
Thank you. Tiffany Stingline. I think my brain is still pounding from Halloween.
That's entirely possible. It's okay. It's okay. I've got nothing to add.
Chairman Mike O'Day.
Just wanted to reiterate a welcome to Mr. Havagorst, and a reminder to get out and vote tomorrow.
Oh, that's right. Did I say that? Really? We talked about this.
Kids, kids, no. Calm down. I only have one thing to add to the mayor's Halloween report. 1,730 kids crossed my front steps on Thursday night. A new world record for Gregory Park. Dare I say, the Halloween capital of the world. Gabe Johnson, Chairman?
Yeah, I'll keep the Halloween theme going. I take my kids to North Brainerd, and thank you, Kelly, and to all your neighbors. That, the atmosphere in North Brainerd is just electric every single year. The kids absolutely love it. And that's why the teenagers are out trick or treating, is because they don't want to give it up. It is so much fun going to North Brainerd. It's like you're in an 80s movie, running around with hundreds of 1,700 little ghouls and goblins trick or treating, and it's, it's just a blast.
There, Terry?
We had our drug takeback at Cub Foods, and I want to thank the Brainerd Police Department for being alongside Blade. We collected 47 pounds and 2 ounces of unwanted medication. Huge step in the right direction for the county, and hopefully, next year, we'll double it.
Who doesn't want it? And, best for last, Chief Stunek.
It's a better joke. Good luck to everybody running. And as Mike said, get out and vote.
Thank you very much. We are now looking for a motion to move into closed session for reasons of real estate negotiations. Mr. Langel, is there some state statute that I need to quote?
Yes, sir. It's Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.05, Subdivision 3C, to discuss potential amendments to a purchase agreement concerning the land owned by Roberts Sand and Gravel, PID's 41361081 and 41361080.
I saw move. Second. Motion by Chesak, second by O'Day. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. We will take a seven-minute break to clear the room and the computer.